Please rise for the pledge of allegiance and invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bob?
Heavenly Father, we know you're with us today. You're always with us. You guide us. You give us your counsel. We ask you to continue to bless us. We thank you for the little sampling of rain. We could still use a little bit more. We ask you to be with all of the people who were watching the game last night and saw a young man go down. Be with him and always help us remember that at any time, things like that could happen to us. Today, we again start a new year. We thank you for all of the blessings that have brought us to this time. We want to make sure that we do the right thing as we go forward. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Bob. Microphone over here so I'm not getting chastised. Well, welcome. Happy New Year to everybody. I guess we've turned our calendars to 2023. And I trust that each of you had a blessed Christmas season and hopefully with at least some, if not all, family. That's the best time for me, for sure, as we gather as family. I do have one comment with regard to the agenda. We will be adding a second executive session. It also will be with regard to non-elected personnel. But we'll have two executive sessions for that subject at the end of today's regular meeting. Are there any other things from an agenda standpoint that the board would like to add or delete? If not, we'll head into the agenda. And the first thing is approval of consent agenda items, which are basically the minutes and the payables. And I would accept a motion. There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bob. And Gabby, I guess you're taking the minutes here for a while. Okay. I just wanted to make sure we hit a minute taker. And all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Next is public comment. And in the public comment section, it's anything that is not on our regular agenda. And it's, we always ask that those comments be limited to about five minutes. We're not real strict, but we'd like to keep them within a five-minute period. And also that they be respectful and courteous as the comments are being made. So with those guidelines, any public comments? And since there is silence, I'm guessing there is, there are none. We'll move on to our business items for this day. And John, I think you're up for several. And as you are at the podium, for those who might be online, would you please state name and position with regard to what you're going to present?
I'm John Persis. I'm one of the planners with NDS. The applicant Donna Maynard is requesting to rezone the property generally located at 1606 Lincoln Road in Finney County, Kansas, from G C General Commercial District to R R Rural Residential. This property has recently been platted and the property is currently vacant. The applicant plans to build a house on the property. And the property will be connecting to rural water and will be required to have an ATU septic system due to the one-acre lot size. The proposed use of this property as residential is not consistent with the comprehensive plan or future land use of, and it has the future land use of rural industrial and light industrial. The R R Rural Residential District is appropriate zoning to be able to build a house on the property in the county. And there's also medium-density residential just to the west of the property as well. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the rezoning request at the, at the December 15th Planning Commission meeting. And there are three alternatives. The governing body may adopt the Planning Commission's recommendation by approving the proposed resolution. The governing body may override the Planning Commission's recommendation by a two-thirds majority vote. And the governing body may return the recommendation to the Planning Commission with a statement specifying the basis of the governing body's failure to approve or disapprove. And staff recommends alternative one.
You've heard John's, you've heard John's explanation on the rezoning request for the Lincoln Road property? Questions and comments from the board? And I'm looking at Larry first, since it's over in your neck of the woods. Okay. Bob, anything from you?
I think from the Planning Commission, the comments were, you know, gee, are we continuing to change zoning in all of these areas? And, you know, what happens if somebody comes in and runs a business next to this? And I think the owner was very open to say, I know what's already in the area. I know that I'm building a house in the middle of some industrial and businesses and we're willing to accept that. So I think they covered everything very well.
Okay. Dwayne?
No comments.
Dave?
No comment other than I would offer a motion if you were, would accept it.
And it looks like a resolution needs to be approved, so I would accept a motion.
My motion is to approve Alternative One, which is adopting the resolution.
And the resolution number is zero one dash twenty twenty-three. Is that correct, Gabby?
Yes.
And is there a second?
I'll second that.
And seconded by Bob. Any further comments or questions? If not, all in favor of approving Resolution zero one dash twenty twenty-three, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. So John, let's go on to the next one.
Okay. The applicant Robert E. Husband is requesting to rezone the property generally located at 11545 East Plymel Road in Finney County, Kansas, from A Agricultural District to R R Rural Residential District. The applicant is requesting a rezone because he plans to use it as residential. There's currently a house on the property and multiple accessory structures. The proposed use of this property as residential is not consistent with comprehensive plan or future land use. But rezoning the property to rural residential would be the best zoning district for residential property out in the county. Rezoning would also make this property conforming, since it is less than forty acres. And then the rezoning of this property will not affect any of the surrounding properties. Planning Commission recommended approval at the December 15th Planning Commission meeting. And there are three alternatives. The governing body may adopt the Planning Commission recommendation by approving the proposed resolution. The governing body may override the Planning Commission's recommendation by a two-thirds majority vote. Or the governing body may return the recommendation to the Planning Commission with a, with a statement specifying the basis for the governing body's failure to approve or disapprove. And staff recommends alternative one.
You've heard John's explanation on the second rezoning issue. And since Larry thinks I pick on him every once in a while, Dave, I'm going to start with you this time.
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman. Does the landowner wanting this zoning own the land that's outside of this box to be zoned?
It should just be that small box.
And Gabby, would you go down to the map, please?
Pull the map back up, please, Gabby.
There you go.
Because we often see where, for those out in TV land, if you will, we see that somebody needs, by the bank's direction, to rezone to get a smaller piece of property than a quarter section, for example, in order to get a loan. And those ought to almost be automatic that, that they're approved because they're just doing it for a loan. That's why I was curious here, what's, what's going on. So if that is all they, all of the land that is owned is within that box, then, then that's a different matter than what I'm bringing up, so.
Okay. Dwayne?
I'm just curious. They didn't have any acreage on that. At least I didn't see it.
I believe it was close to five acres. Yeah.
Which is kind of the number we've always kind of reckoned.
Yeah, for those like corner. Yeah.
Thank you.
Bob?
No questions.
Larry, no questions? So this one would also be a resolution, excuse me, number zero two dash twenty twenty-three. And I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve Resolution zero dash two dash twenty twenty-three.
And I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Dwayne, seconded by Dave. And any further comments or questions? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. John, looks like you have one more with regard to rezoning, another one on Lincoln Road.
The applicant Pablo Besseroloma is requesting to rezone the property generally located at North VFW Road and Lincoln Road from G C General Commercial District to I-1, I-2, Light Medium Industrial District. This property has recently been platted and the property is currently vacant. And the applicant plans to build a shop on this property for his business. The proposed use of this property is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Rezoning from I-1, I-2 would be the most appropriate district to build a shop. If this property is rezoned, the project will be, will be required to go through site plan. There are three alternatives. The governing body may adopt the Planning Commission's recommendation by approving the proposed resolution. The governing body may override the Planning Commission's recommendation by a two-thirds majority vote. Or the governing body may return the recommendation to the Planning Commission with a statement specifying the basis of the governing, governing body's failure to approve or disapprove. And staff recommends alternative one.
You've heard John's explanation on this third rezoning request. And Dave, again, I'll look at, to you for any comments or questions.
I think this is, this area has been discussed at great length over at the Planning Commission and here. So I have no questions and favor its approval.
Dwayne?
This was, did we replat this a couple of weeks back or is?
Yes, correct.
So this is the same property?
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Bob?
Can we go back to the picture again, the site plan? The property to the east of this, where it will be contiguous to this industrial, will this impact that property owner's rights in terms of access, building right up to the property line? We had this out in north of Holcomb one time where we were doing some industrial next to residential. And they were limited as to how close they could come to that property line. Are we impacting the property line to the east by doing this?
Oh, we shouldn't be, just because the owner also owns that property too. But once it's rezoned, they'll have to, on the highlighted lot, they'll have to do some screening and stuff.
Okay, so right now, this same individual owns that property. And what is the zoning to the east?
East of it is general commercial. So he'll have to rezone it if he wants to add anything onto the, the smaller property on the, the west. You said west or east?
Wait a minute, you're, I think you guys are talking two different directions.
Right, right.
I'm.
Left or right, let's do that.
Yeah, I'll do that. To the right. It shouldn't affect it. No.
Okay. As long as we're not impacting someone else.
Is it, is that the property that you thought, thought Bob was referencing as far as the same ownership?
The property to the left.
Is the same ownership?
Correct.
I'm, I'm talking about the one to the.
The right, okay.
The bigger.
Yeah, it shouldn't affect it. It should not affect it.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on what Bob was asking.
Is north up on this map, so?
Unless they moved Buffalo Jones.
Nothing was confusing until we started talking about it and then.
So Larry?
Did, did adjoining property owners come in and talk to you guys when this came up?
No.
That's true. Anything else? Bob, did we get all yours? I, I cut you off short. So this is Resolution zero three dash twenty twenty-three, and I would entertain a motion.
May I ask a question first, Mr. Chairman?
Well, sure.
What did we do two weeks ago on this piece of property? Didn't we?
Pla, we platted.
Oh, platted, just platted. I thought we zoned it then. Well, yeah, that's, but I didn't get confused until. So we want to zone it today.
Oh.
So I'll offer the motion to approve the zoning and whatever.
And my comment, my comment is, who's on first? No, I, Dave, Dave has made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Jones and Jones on the motion and the second. Any additional comments or questions?
What's he gonna be back with our next meeting for us to do on this?
Oh, we'll, we'll, we'll find something to be, right, John? Yeah. All right. Hearing no other comments or questions. All in favor of the motion to approve Resolution zero three dash twenty twenty-three, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes. John, is that all you want to say to us today?
Good luck.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that. Next, it looks like Jenny's to be at the podium because we have some adjustments with regard to our budget at year-end to move a few funds around, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
Thank you for, excuse me. Thank you for being with us. Appreciate it. Go ahead.
We are asking the board this morning to consider the budget adjustments as presented. This will more accurately capture what, where expenditures were actually made and match the costs within the approved categories. We are not making amendments to any, any of the funds.
You're soft spoken. Can you?
Speak louder.
Thank you.
And we have reviewed the, the budget expenditures as of 12/23. There are still some outstanding expenditures that will be coming in the next couple of weeks. But we tried to consider any anticipated expenses. We have prepared a schedule of adjustments that you see up there that we would like for you to review and consider. Approval of the suggested adjustments will provide a more accurate reflection of expenditures while allowing staff to develop useful financial information to be used in the preparation of the 24 budget. As we move through this process of getting all the departments decoding more correctly, this process, this adjustment list will get smaller. This, this year's is considerably smaller than the last one that we had you look at last year. And this will just get better each year, hopefully. So we are giving you alternatives to motion to approve the recommended budget adjustments as presented. Or number two suggests alternate adjustments, or three, do not approve them. Any questions?
Please just highlight, you know, some of these adjustments and some of the more major ones, just, not just for us, but for people who might be watching online.
Correct. The, the biggest part for most of the, the departments was due to the wage enhancement that we did in, at, in the beginning of October. So most of those are related to that, where there's personnel, the personnel is involved. The other, the biggest one would be the capital outlay for the buildings and grounds to contractuals. And they have those, they've got several contracts to do work that we, we're not aware we're going to be needed with, that the various things that are going on in the law enforcement center and other buildings. So those are the, the main ones. I would say that a large part of it is those two items.
So we'll go to questions. And Larry, let's start with you this time. Questions or comments?
I can't find that page in our handout.
It's not. It's.
Well, I, I guess I'd like one, so I can look at the whole thing at the same time.
It wasn't online with the agenda.
It was not in our packet. It's not in this handout.
Well, let's, let's do this. We need, we don't have hard copies of what you have up on the screen.
Okay.
If you would go make hard copies.
Sure. I can do that.
While, while you're doing that, and we'll table the rest of your report until you come back.
Okay. Can do that.
I thought maybe I was the only one since. No, I thought maybe, no, I thought maybe I was the only one because I looked at it late, since I was late getting back into, into town. So, so since none of us have it.
By the same token, this is the third month in a row we have asked that this information be submitted with our packet. And it's the third month in a row that we get it delivered when we show up. And, you know, you just can't go through these fifteen pages of numbers and make a realistic decision. So I, I don't know why we can't have it earlier.
Well, today, today, the item on the agenda is adjustments. And for sure, none of us have that hard copy of adjustments. So Jenny, are, is somebody making copies of that? Well, I wasn't, McKenzie wasn't coming on until the board, or until staff reports. Well, I didn't see anything else on my agenda. I thought it was in staff reports.
Just as a background on the budget adjustments, this is the second or third year that we did that. I'm kind of looking at Dory.
Second year?
You know, before that, they never came to the Board of County Commissioners. Something we started a couple of years ago or last year. But in lieu of that, oftentimes in the commission would, after the fact, see those adjustments during the audit when it's presented to you, usually in May.
Yeah. Okay. Well, while Jenny's gone, and any questions and so forth, we'll be, we'll be open to any questions, comments as soon as we get that hard copy. Again, I, I thought I was the only one since I looked at things late because getting back to town. But evidently, nobody saw. So it's a, a couple, oh, go ahead.
So there's, so there's not fifteen pages to act upon.
Right.
One summary page.
Right.
As a cleanup.
Right. Yeah. And that's what I understood, is what's showing on the screen now. But we, we wanted a hard copy to, to go through. So until Jenny gets back, the board governance on our agenda. I just simply wanted to make a, a couple of comments. And, and you might want to make a couple of notes. In the January 17th meeting, which will also be our organization, excuse me, reorganization and, and the swearing-in meeting for commissioners. And, well, I guess any elected personnel won't, won't be in Jan, January 17th. Is that correct, Dory?
Yes, and it will also include not just the, the new commissioners, but also register of deeds and the sheriff.
Right. That's, yeah, that's why I was, yeah.
We do have a judge scheduled to come and do that swearing-in.
Thanks for the confirmation on that. And then, but the other part of it is, during that meeting, we're going to have an extensive time of going through, and the administrator will be prepared to provide updates for us with regard to our board priorities. We said we would want to, we wanted to update and, and have a review of that every quarter. And we're starting that in January, and, and that's the start of the quarterly reviews. So that's going to be an important meeting on January 17th, not just for reorganization and swearing-in of elected officials, but also a review of the priorities. And then lastly, and I'll, I'll touch on it more in detail when we get to the list of meetings and so forth. But we do have, from a board governance perspective, we have several KAC functions that I'll encourage you through the meeting report to attend that affect our governance, our legislative advocacy and so forth. So that's the only things I had under board governance today was to alert you to January 17th being an extensive meeting. And then we'll touch on the KAC activities and KLPG. Wait, well, we can, yeah, I'm going to, well, I'm going to talk about it more during the meetings because I've got a handful of them that we need to put on our calendar. But yes, we can then follow it up with an email too, Larry. That's, that's a good suggestion. So now we're back. And Jenny, if you want to come back to the podium, we're going back to the year-end adjustments. And any, any questions from a financial perspective can certainly be asked of Jenny and of Robert. And, but the, the thing we're being asked today is to approve or not approve the adjustments to the 2022 budget. And that's on this one-page handout that you just received. And it's also up on the screen for those in the audience. So Robert, I think you, you might have a comment before we get more into this.
Yes, once again, this is the year-end budget adjustments. Keep in mind, keep in mind here that your budget was prepared eighteen months ago. So, so these are adjustments are a reflection of the needs to make some minor adjustments in terms of proper accounting that's going on and proper budgeting as we move forward. So as Jenny has pointed out, this list, which I believe was three or four pages long last year, if I recall correctly.
It was.
Has been summarized now down to one page. And moving forward, would anticipate that it would, it will continue to diminish a bit. Of course, you cannot, in your crystal ball, foresee everything that's going on eighteen months in advance. So anyway, that being said, this is a practice that I started actually last year with the Finance Committee so that. finance committee so that we can more accurately account and budget in the future, and then in essence, provide better planning in terms of our operations for the county.
And I would just simply add, and correct me if I'm misspeaking, but all within the published budget parameters that we had, this is just simply within those budget parameters, readjusting some of the line items.
That's correct. Some of the categories within there. You've got the four main categories, and that's what it is.
Right. So, yeah, and since Dave's got his hand up already, we'll start over to my left and, and start with Dave.
I have a question because over the years, at this time of the year, we've made a substantial adjustment in road and bridge to the, to the machinery fund and whatnot, and I don't see any of that here.
No, that will occur on your meeting on the seventeenth. Those transfers.
Okay, so that's coming up. All right. Thank you.
And that's.
This is a, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. I interrupted you. Did, this, this is adjustments to the budget. Next meeting will be transfers.
I'm with you. I'm just a week or two ahead of time.
Yeah.
Correct. Thanks.
Yeah, again. But do you have other questions or comments to Jenny with regard to these adjustments? Dwayne?
Just simply for my clarification and the publics, this is simply transfers within that fund to different lineups.
Correct. Yes.
Bob?
Yeah, can we relate this handout and the deal that's on the screen to the handout that you gave us earlier so that we can look and see what, you know, we don't know what the previous budgeted amount was?
Yes, it is in the, in the packet that you receive for your monthly financials. It is your, your budgeted amounts are in one of the columns on that, so.
So if you could lead us through that, just as a reference?
So for instance, with the adminis- the, the first line up there, that's admin, that's contractual and personnel, that is your, that is general admin line, and so the personnel was over based off of wage enhancements that were done and various things that restructuring of the finance of, or of the admin office. And so that line item was over. If you look on the back of that page that contains your general fund at the very bottom, you can see that you were at a hundred and thirteen percent. So we transferred fifteen thousand from the contractual line, which was only at seven.
So you're on the, you're on the page of zero zero one.
We don't have page numbers, so it's the.
Right. Correct. It's in the statement of cash receipts and expenditures.
And it's highlighted?
It'd be the third, third page.
The back of the second page on the bottom.
And it is highlighted, right?
No, it's underneath of that one. That other, that highlight was for me, and I forgot to clear it out before we left. It's something I have to adjust based off of our CIC reports, and I don't want to forget. So I had highlighted those numbers to. But that's, those are the things that you'll see anywhere on this report where you're over a hundred percent. We are making an adjustment from a different category that was well below to cover that. In, in the fund itself, we are not making, we're not making any additions to it. We were well below all of the budgeted expenditures in all departments this year. We just have some adjustments between those four categories.
Jenny, is it fair to say then, as they peruse through that, those some of the pages that you have, that those that are in excess of a hundred percent were the ones that were adjusted?
Correct. Or, or ones that we anticipated being over a hundred percent based off of expenditures that we know are coming but have not hit financials yet. We still have December credit cards, for instance, that won't, won't be done until the end of this next week, so.
And once again, those ju- those prior years, those adjustments would have been made during your audit. And so we're, we're doing it proactively here so that we can, the finance committee can move forward shortly after the first year to begin the next budgeting cycle.
The one on the elections contractual?
They had some equipment and contra- some of those contracts for their equipment and stuff that were in excess of what they had, what, what we thought that they would be. For the re.
Wasn't related to the.
Dory is saying.
We were able to get back from the state?
Dory's saying it was due to redistricting on those items.
And the BNG?
Buildings and grounds, yeah.
That's significant.
Yeah. There is a significant increase in cost of all things right now. So anything that, and we've got some serious problems going on with a couple of the buildings with the plumbing and stuff. So we've had significant increases in spending in buildings and grounds. But again, if you look at that summary of expenditures, that's the single page that just shows your major funds, we are only at sixty-seven percent of spending through that, through that, through the twenty-third of December overall. So we have had some categories that were way above what we anticipated, but then again, we also had some that were well below.
And what was our cash savings, quote unquote, a year ago? Our income versus expense that we were able to put aside? Wasn't it somewhere in the two to three million?
Just a little over two million, if I remember correctly.
That's kind of what I, that was the number, I think, so.
Predominantly, we were building up the fund reserve in the overall cash and employee benefits, if you recall.
Okay. All right, so these adjustments that you're proposing do not impact that sixty-seven percent number?
No.
Everything's done within the dollars that you had.
Yes.
Proposed before in this.
That is correct. The only adjustment that we had to make budget-wise was the amendment that we did on the sewer district, the debt fund, that we did not anticipate the refinancing and those costs that were related to that. Otherwise, the rest of the budgets were well within their authority.
That was the word I was trying to think of earlier, like budget, that's already.
Yes.
I couldn't think of that, authority word. Anything else, Bob?
No.
Okay, I'm going to backtrack just a second, Larry. And Dwayne?
Personally, I just wanted to make a comment, you know, in my prior years, seems like our administrator is the only one who can get through these numbers for us, and now you're with us as well, Jenny. I just want to say thanks because that gives us another layer, I think, for my own security.
You're welcome.
I appreciate that.
Sure.
Larry?
Sure. You're welcome.
Anything else, Larry?
No.
If not, I would accept a motion to approve these budget adjustments for 2022.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve these budget adjustments for 2022.
And is there a second to that motion?
Go ahead.
Second.
Seconded by Larry Jones. Any further comments or questions? If not, all in favor of approving the budget adjustments for 2022, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Jenny, thank you very much. Appreciate it. And Jenny, next, just, next time we get the financials, if you could insert page numbers on there, I think it would help all of us as we ask questions.
Absolutely.
So, thank you very much. All right. Now we head into the staff reports, and I believe that's where we're going to hear from McKenzie first with regard to a development update. And so if you would come to the podium, please. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. McKenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. So today's development update for you, I did include all four of the developments that I had talked to you about last meeting. However, I don't have, I only have a development update for one of them, which is Ponderosa. So. So if you go to the next one, Gabby, please. Okay, so since we brought this before you last week, we have had, or not last week, last meeting, we, last year, yeah. We have had the RHID kickoff meeting with the developer and owner to discuss the whole process and get numbers from them so we can start the financial analysis. So we have started that. We're working on the feasibility study, and we're also working on the development agreement and plan. We hope to have that, for that second resolution, that resolution to establishing the public hearing, we hope to have that by next meeting. But that's the timeline right now. It always, it could change at this point, but. So I do want to have Jenny come up and talk to you a little bit about that feasibility study that we're working on right now. She'll catch you up to speed on that.
Yeah. Appreciate it.
Gabby, if you'll pull up that spreadsheet that I sent you. We did the preliminary, the analysis on the, the information that the developer gave us for the RHID. In the resolution that, that you guys, that you all passed, it does specify that the analysis is to be done on fifteen years, but there is nowhere that specifies that it has to pay out within that fifteen years. This development, as it was presented to us by the developer with their, their figures, will pay out in year eighteen. So we just wanted to make the board aware that it will not pay out in the fifteen years that you were anticipating, and wanted to make sure that you were okay moving forward with this as a eighteen-year payout instead of fifteen before we move forward with.
Commissioners, as a side note, you are allowed by state statute to go up to twenty-five years within your resolution, as Jenny had stated, is that your analysis is to be performed on a fifteen-year basis. And following that analysis, it, it was identified that based upon the data provided by the developer that you're looking at a eighteen-year payback.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
I have a handful of questions. Is this a development in the middle of the golf course?
Correct.
So, and you said eighteen years rather than fifteen years.
Correct.
What's our history? Do, didn't we have somebody that we did a seventeen-year on sometime back? But fifteen years has kind of been the limit, has it not, that where Lana was involved? My point is, I think we're setting a new precedent here. And, and that maybe is worthy of discussion. So what would it take to make this comply with a fifteen-year calendar?
Well, there's an expenditure approximately four hundred thousand dollars that is in excess of that fifteen years. There's a, there's so many factors within this thing that, that take place. One is the, the rate in which the new homes are, are constructed. And I think we've identified in this one here, this example of four per year, the initial year was six, and then four every year after that, there's twenty, it's twenty-six unit development. Okay? So, so that's one aspect of it. If, if, if they build, just by way of example here, five homes after that first year, five homes per year, it shortens the term to about sixteen years then at that point in time.
Those obviously though are not entry-level homes.
That's correct. The developer anticipated that the average cost of these homes would be five hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, I'm not trying to cause problems for the developer at all, but my, my question is, then the next developer comes along, do we make another adjustment that's not traditional and so on? Do, or do we set down, Bob has asked us over time to set some guidelines and a framework and, and for developments, and so this to me steps outside of that framework a little bit. Anyway.
Dwayne, will just work around the table?
Not at this time, no questions.
Okay. Bob?
I believe Robert's comments are right on track that if the developer develops at a faster speed, that they do in fact have the opportunity to recoup those dollars based on appraised value, coupled with the fact that the appraised value could be going up at the same time. And I believe even the fifteen years is, if by chance they are paid back in twelve years, as an example, Lana, is that the end of the amount of money that they can recoup?
Commissioners, you set your RHID, sorry, Lana Devol, Fannie County Economic Development, we propose to you that you set your RHID up the same way that the city of Garden City has theirs established. At the end of the fifteen-year term, if they are not paid back for all of the items that they included in that, it still ends. Now, in the city's RHIDs, all of them that we've done, all but I believe one, maybe we may now have two that have fallen behind schedule, but all but one of those, up until at least last year, had actually, was actually ahead of schedule to pay back. But the way your RHID is designed is that they get up to fifteen years. If they recoup all of their costs prior to the fifteen years, it terminates at that time. If they don't recoup all of their costs by the end of the fifteen years, they don't recoup their costs. It ends at the fifteen-year mark. By statute, as, as your administrator said, you are allowed to go longer with RHIDs. However, we chose as a community to limit that to fifteen years because you are asking all of the taxing entities to forego their tax revenues until the end of that period. And as a community, in discussions years ago, that many of you were a part of, we opted that we wanted to shorten that term in order to get those, those properties on the tax rolls as soon as possible. Hopefully, that answers your question.
Thank you, Lana. It does answer mine. I, I believe, long-term, we need to find a system that works for the city and the county so that we start talking to one another again, and this is a perfect way. I think we need to adopt it the way it is at this point in time, so we only have one set of rules.
Your, your statement there, I don't quite understand. Adopt it the way it is. You mean the.
Adopt it the way that's been presented in, in the fifteen years for RHIDs.
But this is not fifteen years.
Well, this one has a line at fifteen years, but there is a way out for the developer to still recoup their money by either accelerating the quote-unquote build process. They can still get their money back on or before fifteen years.
Robert?
Okay, so, so with that comment, in essence, then, what we will do is then proceed with the process, developers agreement, so on and so forth, that specifically identifies a fifteen-year limit.
Well, we will if that's the consensus of the board.
Correct. Correct. But that's, but that is, that's the question at hand, is do you want to limit it to fifteen? Are you, or are you willing to allow it more?
But before we get a reading on that consensus, I'm going to, unless Bob has another question, I want to hear from Larry.
I, no, I cleared it up, questions and discussion.
Okay. So is the consensus, I mean, this is the, the worksheet that they went through to do the calculations, and it penciled out at, at eighteen years. But do we want to, as Robert has just verbalized, give consensus to sticking with the fifteen years, or what is the consensus of the board?
Well, Mike, before consensus, I have a question. What if the next developer comes in with a project and you pencil it out and it's twenty-five years, which the law allows? Do we then consider, okay, that's our new parameter, or do we, do we hold more firmly to the fifteen years? I mean, we need to decide what we're gonna do in the future because these things will keep going up.
I think our president of our economic development corporation has laid that out already. That order, these decisions has been made at 15 years.
That's what I was, why I'm bringing this up.
So I think we stick with what's the 15-year period.
Robert, did you have a comment to insert?
No, I think, I, I think that that question is a valid question and concern, especially as costs continue to, to increase and so forth. But there again, you go back to your partnership and understand, get a firm understanding, is this something we want to nudge up at that point in time or, or are we comfortable with the 15 years at that? Now, this is the first one, I believe, that we have seen that the payback has been in excess of 15 years. So I think in the future, if we need to have that conversation as we move forward on some of the other projects, we can have that conversation, but I think.
Robert, do you know the conversation? Did you guys have a little meeting where you brought in somebody from the college and somebody from the school districts and, and the city and so on over this? This, because this is out in the county, that didn't apply to the city, but it sure does apply to the, to the school district and the college.
No, we've not done that. We, and the whole reason is, is that this is the start of a conversation with the board of county commissioners to identify, is this, are you comfortable? Do you want to maintain the 15 years? Or what's your, what's your preference? And it sounds like in general, in general, you're wanting to maintain that 15 years.
Would that be your thought, Larry? And Bob, and Bob, I think that's your thought, if I heard you correctly.
I, I think we need to set a community standard and that be the city and the county be on the same page and have one set of rules so that when economic development goes to their toolbox, they have one set of rules.
Lana, did you have anything else to add besides what's already been said?
Yeah, my apologies. I just wanted to share, we have had some conversations about increasing the term for higher density or larger units, larger numbers of units. I've had some conversations with the city regarding that, just because as we extend utilities out, we're getting, as you said, into higher costs. So our discussions around that centered around having a meeting with all of the taxing entities in the room so that we can decide as a community that we want, you know, if, if we want to change the policy in any way, how we want to do that. But again, that would be for high-density, larger-unit projects. So, you know, think large-scale apartments, that type of thing, not for, typically would not be usable for single-family housing. So hopefully that helps too. There will be a discussion coming around exactly what you're talking about.
May I have a bit of a conversation? RHID, Rural Housing Incentive District. This is out in the county and so what, what is being asked is somebody give up their collection of, of taxes and that collection of taxes go somewhere to pay for infrastructure. And in this case, go to the county, is that correct?
So the RHID tool, the way we utilize it in Fannie County, there, there are two ways it can be utilized. And you can, the, the community itself can choose to build the infrastructure and then they actually receive the funds back over time. The way we've chosen to do it is to put the onus on the developer. So we've actually created ours so that the developer fronts the cost of whatever that infrastructure expansion is and then they get those funds back over the 15 years. As with any of these development tools, all of the original property taxes continue to be collected and continue to be paid to the entities as they always have been. The only thing we're asking the entities to forego is the new revenue for the first 15 years of the project. So that increment goes to the developer until they are either repaid or hit that 15-year mark. And then it goes on to the full tax rules as everything else around it is.
And having sat in those meetings as a representative of the county when we bring the entities together, I recall conversations from like superintendent of USD 457 saying, well, we'll relinquish the tax, but we're gonna be able to gain a little bit because if we add some kids to the student population, the formula from the state pays us a little bit more, so we can do that. It costs them a little but not a lot. So that this, to me, what I'm saying is, we need to have that discussion again with the school districts and the colleges and, and as much like Bob is suggesting, so that we're all doing the same thing.
We would agree. And as I said, Matt Allen and I have had some discussions around how we might alter the program to make it more usable for those larger-scale projects and that's a discussion we need to have with the entire group.
I don't want to rain on the parade, but can we table this until we?
I don't know that we'd need to table. We're giving, we're giving the administration our guidance, if it's consensus here, to work within the 15 years. Am I?
Yes, that's correct.
You're correct.
15 years to spur the development.
Right, right, right. And I, my only question is on the thing that's on the screen and, and I, I understand the 15 years highlighted in the, in the gold or yellow. Is there any significance to 2038 being?
That is the, that would be your year 15, the end of year 15. So if you?
That's the 15.
Correct. The gold is where it actually pays out.
Right, right. No, now I'm looking over to the right.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'm with you. Just want to make sure I understood your color code.
Yes, yep.
Okay, so the consensus is for the administration to work within the 15 years that we have previously set. Am I understanding?
With one additional thing. I'm sorry, but did you get your clock out?
I have to start putting it on you, Larry.
Lana hinted that, you know, something major may come along someday that's way beyond the 15-year possibility. And I don't want to see us rule that out. I, but I'd like to see it so that we can call that committee of, folks together from the school district and college and the the county and so on and make adjustments into the future. But, but for right now, just for the parameters that we're setting out here, what are the rules right now? I, I think the consensus is 15 years.
Yep, yep.
If I'm correct, I believe that your resolution has to be renewed every year annually for the RHID. So yeah, and that would be in April again this year.
Okay. Fair enough.
Okay, okay.
My clock was on Dave. Mark this down. Robert, anything else from your perspective that adds to this conversation?
Nope, we just needed to have that brief conversation, make certain that you're comfortable with the 15 years or whether you would entertain anything else. And if so, if you were going to entertain something else, that's when that group would come together. So.
Okay.
All right.
I think you've got our guidance.
That's it.
Yeah.
Correct, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny and Robert both and Mackenzie?
Okay, so the plan review stage, we're still, where we were at, staff is still reviewing the plans that were submitted for the infrastructure. And there has not been a final plot submitted and there has not been a resubmital of the preliminary plot. So we're still in, we're still waiting on the plots at least right now. I think the preliminary plot, the plan is for it to go to planning commission on the 19th of this month. So hopefully we get a resubmital before then, before it goes. And then just so the board is aware, Ponderosa, there is actually already a Ponderosa addition in the county. And so they did, they are changing their name slightly. The Register of Deeds has allowed them to do Ponderosa of South Wind Edition. So that is going to be the official name of the subdivision.
I thought that name sounded familiar. I, you know, I had forgotten there was another one in the county, but yeah.
Yep. So that is all the updates that I have for you. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions from the commission? Larry, Bob?
In, in just the comments that you said, if it goes to the planning commission on the 19th, when could they start building? In your new flow chart, is it six months? Is it three months?
Well, they haven't had official infrastructure drawings approved yet and they haven't had their final plot submitted. So it depends on how long it takes them to get their final plot submitted. If their final plot is submitted in time for them to go to the 19th, I don't know if it, they have enough time. It's possible that that could be along the timeline with the RHID that we're going through right now. They can't start construction until that development agreement's in place, the plot is approved by the board and the infrastructure drawings are finished.
And, and they know that if they miss this 19th and they miss February 19th, that they may be September, October doing something. They know where these timelines are.
Yes.
I just want to make sure of that. Thank you.
We went over those timelines in the RHID kickoff meeting.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Dwayne? Can you tell me answer questions?
No, we're just.
Anything else, Mackenzie, from your perspective?
That's it right now.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep. And we're on to the county administrator. Robert?
All right, well you saw today as we're going through a lot of year-end processes, not just within our office, but in some of the other offices identifying various projects and expenses as we try to move forward. We'll meet with the, we met with, meet with the auditors, I believe it is next week. Is that correct? Or is it this week? So that's this week. And, and, and what we're doing is, is some pre-planning as we move forward. And it will allow us then to try and plan some of the projects that we've been speaking about for months and months to, to get them rolling in '23. So we have, we have an awful lot of that going on within our offices as well. Kurt, I don't know if you have anything from your end for public works on the update or, or not? As I see Doug in here, I know he and I are both working on a grant application related to a continued fiber project that was done back in 2020. And, and that, I think we, we may have found out that we have at least a partial award to complete around the city, that extension of fiber. And Doug's working with Ideatech to flesh out what that, what, what that project ends up looking like. And it also includes a possible extension onto Holcomb.
Is that, is that part of the funds that were just announced recently that the state received? Yeah, I saw Ideatech was one of the vendors that was eligible for those or had requested those.
The project name that they were awarded is, is called 83 Corridor. If you'd like to look up that map, there is a very tentative public map available. I'm working on getting a more complete map that, that is for Fannie County itself here in the next month or so.
And as you recall, we had not, it's not just the benefit of the county operations, but various other business partners, community partners and so forth.
And this current award should enclose the rest of the Fannie County loop to get back to this building. And it'll get next to the new fire EMS station.
That was gonna be my next question.
Yep, and we are going to have an extension out to Holcomb that will be included with this also.
Thank you Doug.
Yes. Okay, go ahead Kurt.
Kurt Logsdon, Public Works Director. One thing I should update you on is some recent information that we have received or obtained on the lift station that we took over from Northwest Industrial District. As you're all aware, when we took that over, we had no plans. We had no idea of what we were really taking over because there was no plans on the installation process for it. Last week, we've, we've been having a few issues out there and last week I did some extensive review out in the field and we stumbled upon three manholes that were a makeshift manhole out of galvanized culvert. And it had lids on it marked water. And at first we thought it must have had something to do with water and so we ignored it and then later on I got thinking, yes, that just doesn't make sense because I've never seen anything for water like this. So we went back and we did some research and found out that we actually found three air relief valves for our lifts, for the lift station. One of them is on K dot right away and two of them is actually inside the feedlot. Now, after, when I found that out, I went over and talked to I forgot, I think it was Brian at the feedlot. Yes. And he was actually working for them when the sewer line was put in. So I got a little information from him, but the two manholes that is on the feedlots property, one of them is on the feedlots property. And then come to find out, the other, the third one is on K dot's property, also on old 83, on 83. But a lot of their corrals and property is actually on K dot property. Okay, so the way we have it now is we do have two air relief valves that is on K dot right away and then one that's inside the, the feedlot. We are, this week, we are going to be getting those manholes cleaned out and get information to SMH so that that can be included in this project that we have going on for the updates to all the lift stations. The other thing having to do with this lift station is that we're thinking that this week Western Kansas Corridor contractor will be hooking into that lift station. They haven't got back to us as of yet, but they're gonna give us 48 hours notice. But that was the plan before the holidays. Was it as soon as the holidays was over that they would get in and do that? We're gonna let them go ahead and hook into the current lift station. I was, we was really hoping that it would work out to where they could hook into the new one because we're gonna have a new one built there. But because of the responsibility that the excavator has in WKC, it was gonna be a big hardship on him to have to wait. So we decided that we're gonna let them go ahead and hook into the old one and then when the new one comes in, we'll get that all handled. So that is the latest update on our, our new sewer line.
Appreciate that. Any questions?
I guess I'm a bit confused, which is not unusual, but I thought you were gonna go out on bid for a new lift station some weeks ago.
It's been being designed. We are getting, we, we were going to have it ready by the end of this year, last year that I told you. But SMH had some problems with their electrical designers. And so as of right now, we were planning on going out to bid by mid-January. Now with these latest findings, I'm gonna have to give these three air relief valves to Todd and I don't know how lo, how much longer it's gonna take for him to complete the design on these three.
You're gonna sound like a government project.
Well, you know, I'd be honest with you, this is, this has been a, a different one for sure when we have to take something over that virtually had no plans on it whatsoever. We had no idea what's in the ground. Now, I can honestly say we, we have 98% certainty of what we do have in the ground.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all right. Appreciate that report. Okay. All right. Appreciate that report. Anything? The other thing that I would ask that you give us an update on, we had a water problem over at the LAC, over at the law enforcement center here recently because of, I think it was due to a frozen pipe, if I'm not mistaken. So can you give us an update on that, please?
That's correct. Over the Christmas holidays, we, we had a couple of facilities with frozen pipes. JDC also had one. A sprinkler head froze and broke and they had some, that one there was a little bit easier to fix, obviously, with a sprinkler head. This one here is a elbow in the sprinkler system at the JDC. And apparently, there were some videos of that distributed. And you could definitely tell that it had a waterfall effect. And anyway, Paul called me that evening on, on that as well. And so they got that taken care of and, and cleaned up. And I'm not certain what all the cost is associated with that. But both those now are, are fixed with, with Rex doing the assessment on further plumbing and needs over there at the LAC, which will really end up moving to the forefront in twenty-three to, to get some work done over there.
And then.
That's not the first, not the first time that's happened at the LAC.
No, it's not. And then you mentioned Paul's name. And, and as, as is your responsibility, you alerted me to the fact as chair that Paul was working on emergency shelters during that real cold snap for those two, three days. Would you just inform us and the public, you know, what Paul went through and what you and he talked about?
One of the things that Paul worked on was identifying, and I believe he had approximately six various shelters in the community opened during that extreme cold. And to what I recall in last week's update from Paul is that I believe only one of them had one or two people take advantage of, of that facility. But once the weather service came out with that extreme cold, he worked with community partnerships, Red Cross and so forth to get some, get some things up and running. So luckily, we didn't have to put all of them in action. But, but we did have one facility that had one or two people that took advantage of the.
I just think it's important for our public to know that that's part of what goes on here behind the scenes, if so to speak, is that even though there's just a couple of cold days, we've got emergency management working to make sure that there are facilities where people can go if they're out of heat and, and be sheltered for a while. So I appreciate your update on that. And appreciate Paul's work with regard to that because I know he worked on it a couple of days in order to get that accomplished. Okay. I mentioned that I would bring forth to, to you some other things with regard to meetings and events. And if you'd pull up that screen, first of all, Gabby, just so we, so everybody in the audience can see that some of the upcoming meetings, yeah. And if you would make some notes. And then Gabby, after this meeting, when you put some of this new information that I'm going to mention and hand to you, if you would email that to each of us commissioners, I would appreciate that as well. On January twelfth and thirteenth is new commissioner orientation. And Jerry Schultz, our incoming commissioner, has said he will be attending that. It's in Topeka at the, now it's not called the Capital Plaza, it's called Hotel Topeka. And he plans to be there on January twelfth and thirteenth. I was asked to be on a panel discussion, but I'm out of town and declined to do that. But it's open to any commissioners, even though it's focused on new commissioners and helping them get better acquainted with county government. January twenty-fourth, starting at lunchtime through the afternoon, is the KLPG Annual Topeka Meeting. And I think that also is at Hotel Topeka. Larry, do you recall?
As far as I know.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's correct. But that's on the twenty-fourth. On the twenty-fifth, and this is one I would like to encourage you and then Dory and Robert and others, this is the KAC Local Government Day. And it's the lunch, it starts at lunch and goes till five o'clock. But anybody from the county, in addition to commissioners, can be, can attend this meeting. But that's on January twenty-fifth. On January twenty-sixth is the Fannie County Economic Development Annual Meeting. And I don't know the start time. Alana has left a room. I think probably about eleven or eleven thirty. And then, but the important thing about this is add some additional time to that if you're able to attend because they plan to have a tour of the Starbond or the Sports of the World area following the annual meeting. And so that, I don't know, one, one thirty, something like that will be a, a tour that they're trying to. I assume, yeah, I assume it's at the endowment room at the college. I may still be in Topeka that day, but I would encourage all of us to try to attend that if at all possible. On February ninth, and this is one for all the county areas. And also, Robert, if you would make sure that Roxanne is aware of this from CB, CBB, is the KAC Day at the Capitol. This is the second year that they're doing that. They set up in the rotunda. And they, last year, for example, Liberal had their CBB people there, just what's going on in Liberal and Seward County. I think it would be pertinent for us, or excuse me, appropriate for us to in, in be involved in that. As well as they had county treasurers and, and other organizations tied to county government. But it's all day, I think, from nine to three or nine to four, something in the Capitol on February ninth. And Kim Qualls is the contact person for that. So if we want a table or whatever, there's, I don't think they're charging for booth space or anything. It's just, we just need to get a reservation in if we want to have a table there. And then lastly, February sixteenth is the Southwest Kansas Highway Meeting here in Garden City at the Clarion. I don't have any more information than that, but usually it starts in the morning.
Nine o'clock?
Nine o'clock.
Oh, do you? Okay. I didn't, I didn't have that on my calendar. But usually, it's morning and goes through lines or a little after. But those were the additional things. But we'll get an email out with an updated calendar. And then the things you can see on the screen that were in your packet that I wanted to highlight, there is the night out in Topeka for the Southwest Kansas Chambers. It was originally the twenty-third, but now on the thirtieth. Because it's that following week, I probably will not get there. But if anyone from the county can get there, Robert or, or commissioners, that'd be great. And then the legislative coffees start in February. And you can see the one, one there that's on the schedule, but they're in February, March, April, and May. Those Saturdays at ten o'clock at the endowment room. And then lastly, the chamber banquet, and I assume the county is getting a table or two for that, is March thirtieth. And count me, count me in on that for two, when we get that table, by the way. So those are just some of the things I wanted to highlight on that upcoming meetings and so forth. Questions or comments or any, any other meetings that you know of that we need to have on our calendar? If not, let's head into the commissioner reports and working from my right to left. Larry?
Oh, Fannie County, I attended Fannie County, Fannie on AG. They finally moved their meetings around enough times that.
You were able to get there.
And it was a good one. And so I've got the packet here if anybody's interested. They're trying to consolidate some of their accounts. They've got accounts scattered all over Garden City and around. And they're trying to do a little consolidation. And I, I thought with the, with the expertise that are, that's with Hillary and with Jennifer Mojo coming on, that's in the CPA, I think they'll have, they'll have some expertise on how to get things organized. And, and you know, they, they were amazed that they could put their money out for bid. And I said, well, yeah, you can do that. And they need to do that because they, they carry a pretty substantial cash account. And I don't know, Jenny, do you ever get to work with them much? Fannie County on AG? I suggest that, you know, Hillary would contact you and maybe two of you need to get together. Because it appears to me like they're, they're carrying a lot of cash up the books. And he needs to figure out somewhere to put it up in. So it isn't scattered all around. It's supposed to be a nightmare for his name. Also had an update on their, on the minibus and the, and the ridership. And so if anybody's interested in the numbers that are made. But other than that, it's like they're getting along pretty good.
Thank you. Bob?
I think USD four-five-seven is having a really special event today for their teachers. They have an in-service day. And they invited the business communities to come in and share with the teachers and have an interplay to where we can get the business community and the educational community together and try to get them on the same page and set up some internships, maybe some apprenticeships, and just basically sharing between business and industry and the educators on what can be done and what the needs are in our community. So it sounded like they were going to have a real good turnout from the business community. Hopefully, everybody responded from the holiday weekend and remembered that it was this morning. I'm not sure what the agenda looks like on the seventeenth, whether the reorganization is the first thing on the agenda, or whether all of the budget information that we worked on last year that we're now creating and moving forward is something before, I guess, for selfish reasons, I hope there is a time to go through all of those changes of things that we had a hand in this last year, that that still be open before we change seats. In talking, hearing from the staff about RHID and, and having our different programs, I think it's really important that our city, our county, our school districts, both of them, our college, and even our hospital, get back on the same page and start meeting and have a regular interchange on where we are, where we're going, and how we're going to get there. We can't do what we've been doing alone. We need everybody in the community heading in the same direction. And that may not be easy, and it may not happen in one meeting. But we need to get back on that. And I really encourage the commissioners to stay on that. And Robert, to work forward with finding a way to get a relationship going with all of these guys and keep it going. Because, you know, Fannie County has been so progressive over so many years. And we want to make sure we don't drop that. That's all I have.
And I would just simply follow up on your last statement. I believe that Mica with the chamber is coordinating, coordinating the meeting that you're talking about. She had sent out an email to the administrators and, and of the different organizations before Christmas. And I don't know, has a date been set for the first meeting yet?
There, there has not yet. But I know she is working on that. I know, I think the first response, there was a little bit of conflict with some of the other partners and so, in terms of timing. So she's still working on, on establishing what time and date and so forth.
And I knew she had sent out an email about a month ago. And I didn't know if that, anything had been done on that. But that, just to assure you, Bob, that that is in motion with Mica as the coordinator. Dwayne?
Unfortunately, because of the holidays, all of my meetings were postponed due to lack of quorum. So no report.
Okay. Hey.
First time in my career here that I did not have a meeting between last meeting and this meeting to report on. But a couple of things I want to mention. Dory sent out a, a notice that Terry Township needed a treasurer. And so next meeting, we will have a volunteer, if you will. I made a couple of phone calls and found a Terry Township citizen willing to serve. That township, if you recall, has been somewhat of a problem keeping board membership because at one time, we talked about dissolving the township. And thankfully, we found representatives. Another thing I want to report on is today at one o'clock, I received a message this morning that the Rotary will appear before the city commission for a resolution by the mayor for the Rotary's one-hundredth anniversary in Garden City. And that's laudable. I'm sad to say, they did not contact the county to have the same recognition. And so I don't know how we, how we adjust that. But I intend to have some conversation. Anyway, that said, the, the meeting agenda that, that you filled in here long, it sounds like somebody needs to take up residence in Topeka in order to attend all of the, all of the meetings.
I am that week. That's for sure.
All right. That's it. I have nothing else to report.
I will report on a couple of things. But before I do, I just received a text. The night out, the chamber night out is from five to eight that evening on the thirtieth. I just got a text on that. Somebody is watching us. And so that's a reception with the legislators. And also, it, it appears that the entities meeting with the, their directors, the CEOs of the organizations might be set for Thursday.
Yes, it's Thursday. Correct.
The first meeting will be happening this week for those organizations. My two reports are, first of all, the only meeting that I attended since our last meeting was economic development. And I reported to you their annual meeting. The rest of their meeting was routine. And the facility, the facilities audit that we had brought to you one other time, that is still in motion. I just wanted you to be aware that that is still in motion with Mica and Roxanne and Robert. And they're working together to bring back a substitute proposal that was authored by Hunnun. And be back with the ad hoc group with that. And then it may come to us in another month or so. But that has, even though we haven't reported on it, that's been in motion. But again, Thanksgiving, Christmas schedules and so forth have delayed getting back any quicker. Any other comments? Anyone's thought about during the reports? If not, we will have two executive sessions. The first one, Robert, I, with you and Kelly, I believe, up to thirty minutes. Is that long enough? Okay. The first one is for non-elected personnel to include Robert and Kelly in that session with us for up to thirty minutes. We'll take about a, a little over a five-minute break. So we'll say, we'll, we'll start the executive session at ten and, and end no later than ten-thirty. And I would accept a motion. A motion by Larry. Is there a second?
Second.
Secuted by Bob. That will go into executive session at ten o'clock for non-elected personnel discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Gabby, are you with us? We are out of that executive session and we, no action is being taken as a result of it. We need to have a second executive session and I would suggest that it be up to 30 minutes and for the discussion of non-elected personnel and it will begin with just the five commissioners and I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we go into executive session and we'll be out at five.
No later than. No later than.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
On opposed, nay. Motion passes. You may disconnect.
May the record show that we're out of executive session and we -- no action is being taken as a result of it. If not, we are adjourned till Tuesday, January 17.